Part of the answers he won.
Recording in progress.
Give thorough.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and call us to order. This is City Council, Monday, December ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Roll call, please.
Karen Miller?
Here.
Tracy Snyder?
Here.
Jim Masaius?
Here.
Tom Nemus?
Here.
Dave Anderson?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Jared Trumbo?
Here.
Present?
Next is the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of the British Commons, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item is approval of minutes from the council meeting on November eighteenth.
I'll make the motion to approve minutes. Number eighteen.
Motion by Tom.
Second that motion.
Second by Karen. Any questions, comments, edits or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is approval of monthly expenditures.
I'll make the motion to approve the monthly expenditures.
All seconded.
Motion by Tom, second by Tracy. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing none, roll call, vote please.
Jared Trumbo?
Yes.
John Hopkins?
Yes.
Dave Anderson?
Yes.
Tom Nemus?
Yes.
Jim Masaius?
Yes.
Tracy Snyder?
Yes.
Karen Miller?
Yes.
Okay, monthly expenditures are approved. Next item is public comments. Is anyone here tonight that would like to give public comments?
Maybe worded with a small... That is not the only reason I decided to make public comments, but it was one of the reasons. My name is Karen Novacek. I reside at six ten East Horse Street. Mayor Moji and members of the common council. Just an update, and first of all, a thank you. A thank you to Jerry and his wonderful staff. They began the process this morning of putting up the snowplight. They are not quite done and will complete the task tomorrow. And lights? Maybe, you know, I keep thinking, I say, keep saying tomorrow, and hopefully it is tomorrow. But the snowplights will be up and we're repositioning some of the silhouettes also. But Jerry and his staff have been wonderful. And I just wanted to update the council and those who've listened to the council proceedings that it has been a long time, but we now have some of the snowplights up. We'll have the rest up tomorrow. And cross our fingers there will be lights. Update. Thank you. And I have my candy cane. Thanks so much. Appreciate the update. It was worth it.
Hello, my name is Marjorie Diamond Simpson. My husband Chuck and I live at nine thirty-nine West Bayfield Street, which many of you know as the old veterinary hospital building. This area is owned cottage commercial, and when we bought the property in May of two thousand two, we changed the use back to residential. I have two subjects I'd like to talk to you about that are both related about to snow. We were out of the country for the last two winters. This is our first winter of residence in town, and we're just kind of trying to figure stuff out. First, regarding the winter parking rules. There's an unintended consequence of this rule that I hope that you can help us with. Much of the town has the option of alternate side of the street overnight parking in front of their homes, but because we're on Bayfield Street, we do not have that opportunity. We also do not have a driveway off of Bayfield Street, so we rely on the alley to access our off-street parking. That alley between Bayfield and Pine, running from ninth to tenth avenues, was not allowed either after the snow last week or after the late March snowstorm last spring. We know that there are other properties on the streets where alternate parking is not allowed. They also rely on alley access. And we request that our alley and all the other alleys that serve as the sole access to allowed winter parking adjacent to or on a parcel be given the same priority for plowing as the city streets.
And we can't respond at this time, but...
Yeah, that's just, you know, we don't have a way to get in if the in and out, if the alley doesn't get plowed.
Understood. Thank you.
And the second is regarding snow removal. I'm still having a hard time figuring out how the city can have an ordinance that requires us to clear a city sidewalk that's on state property just because it's adjacent to our parcel. But that ordinance has been around for a while, so we have honored it. And to be clear, both natural snow and the mess of snow and ice repeatedly deposited by the snowplows have to be removed. After we purchased our property, the sellers who had a business that was open to the public here told us that we would be subject to substantial daily fines from the city if we did not keep the sidewalk adjoining our property clear. During the past two winters, while we were out of the country, we spent a thousand dollars hiring people to maintain that portion of the sidewalk. This is a sidewalk to nowhere. Setting the scene, starting at Ninth Avenue, there's a vacant restaurant, then the Fat Radish, then two vacant lots, then our place and the place on the corner, which is not occupied in the winter and has its access off Tenth Avenue anyway. The sidewalk then ends a hundred feet after our parcel at Tenth. We don't use the sidewalk because we use the alley access to our back doors. And at this time of the year, anybody walking into the Dollar General who isn't suicidal would go down Pine Street. So none of the sidewalk paths to Fat Radish provides access to anything. Snow and ice removal ordinance says that the Director of Public Works enforces the requirements. It states that every twenty-four hours that the sidewalk isn't cleared is an additional offense. The section on fine says that general penalties to violations of city ordinances are twenty-five to five hundred dollars per day and appears to be doubled there for the first offense. I couldn't find anything online that specified the amount of the fine for failing to clear a sidewalk. The ordinance also says that the Director of Public Works may, and I emphasize the word "may," cause the removal of said snow and or ice and charge the adjacent landowner for work. Last week, the snow ended on Wednesday. On our block, the only properties with cleared sidewalks are us and the Fat Radish. Public Works has chosen not to clear the rest of the block. Can we take this precedent to mean that the ordinance is not being enforced on this block and we are exempt from sidewalk clearing requirements this snow season? And is this, and if we, if so, great. If not, is the City Council willing to declare solely for the purpose of this ordinance that the downtown business district ends at the Fat Radish? I would assume this would be worthy to allow revisiting the issue if the vacant lots are developed or if the sidewalk is extended to the Dollar General. Anyway, I ask you to please consider those two items.
Okay, and you wrote down your information there, your name and address on the...
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Anyone else here for public comment tonight? Anyone online who might want to give a public comment?
Go ahead.
Okay, we will move on. The next item is the oral announcements, confirmations, and appointments. The only small announcement I will make is to tag on to what Karen talked about with the streetlights and the decorations, and that is the lighting. So apparently today, the subcontractor, the D O P, performed their work that was necessary to proceed. And Excel also came out and started their work necessary to get the lights. It is not complete yet, but they will be back tomorrow. And my understanding is that it will be complete tomorrow and we will have lights tomorrow. We have been hearing this, you know, for at least three weeks now. And, but now there's action, so I'm hopeful that that will continue and we actually will have lights tomorrow. I have written a letter to the Regional Director expressing my concern about the safety of our pedestrians crossing the road and the near misses that have occurred with no streetlights, seeing as though it gets dark at, you know, in the middle of the afternoon, you know. And I haven't heard back anything. And that was last week that I sent that email. However, the work is being done. I'm hopeful that tonight we can get through without any accidents. And tomorrow we shall have light. And that's all I have for that. Moving on to our next item, update and discussion on water and sewer staffing. Public Works Director, here is you. Come on down. And if you don't mind standing at the mic or coming and sitting behind the mic.
Oh, well. I can stand up. I can stand up to this thing. Um, so anyway. I'm here tonight to just bring some updates with Public Works and utilities and staffing and where we're going and some of the things that are going to be coming for council, just to give you a little bit of a heads up and to give you an idea of where we're at, where we're going. So start out first in utilities. We have been posting those positions for over six months now with no success. So a couple of months ago, one of our Public Works employees showed some interest in it, has a background in construction utility work. Sat down, talked to him, got a feel for it, and he is excited to move into that position. So we started with some training, some certification. Out wide for him, he has kind of performed all that stuff, did what he needed to do. He will be taking his Wisconsin DNR testing in the water site this Thursday. And I'm almost very confident that he is going to succeed in that area as far as testing and get his license. He's a very energetic young man, very thorough. I think he will be an amazing fit for the city moving forward. And so with that, we will be filling the water position opening with that employee. Also presently, we have an application on wastewater site. We will be interviewing and going through that process with personnel to see where that may go. So kind of definitely we may have individuals fill that wastewater full-time position. With that being said, I ask Mr. Dietz, who is here tonight, because I want you to know that Mr. Dietz, I don't know all of you know who he is, but he's the gentleman that came in when we lost Joel to Bayfield. Came out of retirement, came in, stepped up the plate, and he has done an amazing job for us. And Mr. Dietz, yes. He's a complete pleasure to work with, very knowledgeable. And the other reason I wanted him here was so you all know, with our Public Works employee transferring in, Mr. Dietz and Mr. Ross Lightner will be working with him to get him trained and to get him certified in some more classifications for the city. And it's very honoring to work with Mr. Dietz because he is exceptional in what he does. He's very thorough, and he is going to be training your staff to take care of the utility department. I just want you to know you're a really good handsman, too.
Thank you very, very much.
And with that said, part of this is we're going to be doing our yearly compliance report for DNR water stuff. You're going to see some issues in there with our reporting that may show up. I want you to know that almost all of my compliance issues except for one have been handled. Thank you again to Mr. Dietz and his skill and knowledge. I've been working with the DNR. We were able to get those wrapped up and completed, and I think moving forward, it's definitely going to be a big plus to the city. So just kind of want to let you know that when those reports come out, we'll be grading for calls for resolution. We'll be addressing those at that point. All I could say is that we're just moving forward and we're getting the script right. So with that, so with the Department of Public Works employee that will be moving from my department to the utilities, we're starting to train there, we're going to be down a employee in Department of Public Works. So at this time, what I'm going, my plan to do is that we make sure that it's a good fit and everything is going to go right. We're possibly be moving some people around within the department with job positions, but I do have some hours left in our L T positions that we did not use through the summer. And I've talked to our L T, which are our limited term employees. They have hours left, and they're on board with helping us get through the winter, which will help us make a better decision come spring, once we get these utility positions filled and where we're going to go in Public Works and where people want to be before we fill that position. So I just don't want to get the cart part of the horse here until, you know, everything kind of settles down. So with that being said, you might see we have two L Ts that kind of rotated out right now and they're helping us. You'll see them all about helping with snow removal and stuff, just so you know, why is this person working? Now you know why they're there. Again, I feel this is best for the Department of Public Works because until we get everybody seated here, moving forward where we're going to fall, I guess it's probably going to be best. And these people are very savvy what they do. They know their jobs, so it's not like we're lacking experience along with our L Ts, so. Try to keep it short and simple. If you have any questions, you're happy to answer them right now as far as the staffing goes.
It's not about the staffing, but about their head at the sewer.
Yes.
Do you feel confident that this person meets the qualifications and interested?
That is going to be what the interview process is for and...
But do they look good on paper? Do they meet their requirements?
They actually, they look very good on paper. Again, just to, he's from the area. Mr. Dietz knows him. Kind of talked about it internally a little bit about this person. And that's my opinion. So moving forward, we'll put them through the ringers and the interview and personnel can have their... Shaking his head. The personnel have their chance to question him and that. We'll keep it going.
No, this doesn't go to personnel.
It doesn't go to personnel?
This is just, it's not a supervisor position.
Oh.
It's just us.
Oh.
That's why we're saying...
No, no, I'm going to tell you that right now. Well, just so, just so you have to understand this. So there's a couple of things that you, with these positions, that you will need to understand. So Mr. Dietz right now is our O I C, so he's our operator in charge. So no matter what we do, no matter who we hire, until that person is capable of doing that, Mr. Dietz will be signing these people off in those positions. And that's why I'm very confident that, you know, and he's easy to work with, that he's going to work with everybody, but these individuals will have to meet those criteria before the reins are handed over to them. So are they qualified? They're qualified, but they need training. They're going to need training. They're going to need, you know, work to get them where they, where they take the whole reins on, so.
Are they licensed?
Uh, so the individual we're interviewing is, and Luke will be taking his test for his distribution on Thursday. And if he passes that, which I'm confident he is, he will have the licensing needed for that position. And just so you know, we had him scheduled twice now to take the test with the DNR twice. It's been canceled. Our class was full, another one we couldn't get him into. And so the DNR actually set up a hardship test. So they actually set up a test strictly just for him to get him through this, because we were planning on getting this done a month and a half ago and getting this handled prior to this, so. And that's why I was saying, I just want to be careful with what we're doing in Public Works and moving people out. Everybody fits in. We really need to go.
Okay, any other questions for Jerry? Thank you very much. Oh, you've got more talent?
Oh, yes.
Next topic.
Oh, of course we do.
All right, so moving on to our next item. It's discussion and action on vehicle purchase for Public Works, which is have two of the packets.
So...
Tell us about the discussion.
Okay, so in our capital outlay budget, we allocate funds every year for equipment upgrades, replacements, kind of similar sort of thing. So we had took some money, we budgeted for the new dump truck that we got. We were fortunate and we were able to purchase a truck for considerable less than what we were planning on, which there's some, there's money left in our capital outlay in our, in our budget to work with. So with this year and everything going on, we're kind of waiting till the end of the year, see how everything goes, in case something major breaks down, we've got to make some replacements. Well, I think you've all seen it, the old gray F two fifty running around here with the wooden rack we threw on it because the box fell off it. We've been using that. That was kind of our, our drag around truck for our salter and our steamer and stuff. The box came off, so we just kind of threw a wooden rack on it, a makeshift rack, and we've been using that, but we've lost the front end of that truck and used some substantial work to it, and it's just not worth sticking. It's kind of under tries, underpowered. Seen its better days. So fortunately, it was kind of digging around and I found a nice Alport fifty, full drive truck that's a much heavier chassis that will handle our salter and our power washer and water rate in the summertime. Plus, the guys got excited. Well, this comes with a tommy lift, so it's a removable that we can take it off in the wintertime when we put a salter on it. In the summertime, we'll be able to put this back on once, instead of lifting everything up with equipment, trying to get it on this truck, not tommy lift, that we'll be able to put things on to get it onto the deck and off. Which will make life a little easier for me, too. And for the year and the mileage and the price, I think it's a very good investment for the city. We have all the maintenance records on this vehicle from the day it was put in the commission up till it was taken out for resale. At, we're asking for permission. There's twenty-three thousand dollars left in our capital outlay. This truck is seventeen five, so if you'd like to purchase this to take that F two fifty off commission, and then what we'll do is we'll list that F two fifty on Wisconsin surplus, all disposable.
I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of the truck.
A motion by Karen, second by Dave. Any other questions? I did run that quote by, I went up where he agreed, he said that's a really, really good price for that, those specs and that model. Okay, any other questions?
That's damn cheap. That's a diesel.
It is a diesel?
No, it's not. Actually, we, we looked at it. This has got the six-two Gaster in it, which has got plenty of power and torque. What we do, and to be honest with you, I'm not a big diesel fan, because every time something happens, it costs ten dollars much to fix it, so.
Very good. Any other questions for Jerry? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, Jerry. Thank you for all your work and research and our next item, moving on, is discussion and action on special event request for shop open shop late night to have relaxation of open container from three to eight P M on December third. Oh, it is December eighteenth. That was a typo on the agenda. December eighteenth, Washington Chamber of Commerce petitioner. This is tab three of the packet. Is Melissa online at all or?
I don't think so. Part of the reason for the request for open container is because we couldn't have a block party.
Grand opening.
A grand opening celebration, so this is about the votes I had. We have opened to celebrate that. Although the highway will not be closed, so.
Yeah, you say we're not closing.
So they need to be careful.
Is that all talent they're requesting? I don't see any.
That's why I was hoping Melissa was online to give us a little bit more detail.
It's specific parameters. And there was a timeframe that actually was adjusted because of Ken.
It's three to eight is what it said.
Yeah, three to eight.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Jason.
She mentions that there might be like live music. Well, she was... I don't know. Encouraged that? I mean, it didn't sound very... I just don't think, I'm just going to comment, I don't think it's that necessary to have, you know, open lip, I mean, not liquor, but open carry of alcoholic beverages if the, if the, you know, the shops are all open and if you want to go to a bar, you can go to a bar and have a drink and leave and not carry the glass into like the chocolate or the sweet shop, you know? And then the sweet shop's like, oh, we really don't want you to have alcohol in here. I was giving an example. If there was like live music and there was like, like the area of the and cultural center was blocked off, that'd be a different story. But I don't, I don't know. I don't think it is needed.
She will be getting licenses for temporary alcohol licenses for some of the businesses for that night.
Yeah, and I know like the hardware store has served wine and beer and that's been cool, but you drink it there and then you leave. I've done that.
So technically, we should probably start with a motion and then have further discussion?
No, that's okay.
Does anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, so motion to approve by Dave, second by John. Further questions and discussion?
Yeah, well, I mean, and I don't know how this goes, but like Bayfield just has theirs and all the shops kind of have drinks and everybody goes from shop to shop. And I, and I don't know if they relax it for that, but people just do it. I think they, they have, just to answer that question, they get their licenses at each of the shops that is serving alcohol, but I don't believe they do a relaxing of the open container law and go back and forth. I think it's just at each of those locations they have permission to serve. Yeah, I just wondered if it was modeled after that because people do take that glass and they go from shop to shop, right? Like you're kind of just like, they give you sangria in one shop and you walk down and you kind of sip a little bit, you take that glass and people just, you see people, I mean, that night I went to it. There was people with glasses like walking up the street. So maybe they relaxed the open container. So maybe they did. So I was thinking maybe she was modeling after what Bayfield just did. Because I don't think people, if they are going to get temporary alcohol licensing to, I think a lot of times people don't finish it, I guess, in each shop, and they kind of go from shop to shop. That's what Bayfield does. I'm not, I don't know what Melissa's doing here, but I was thinking it was like the same model. So they, I think it is that they didn't relax the open container laws. I know there's, no.
There have been historically with that about relaxing open container laws, several open container citations issued, people who didn't know that it wasn't allowed carrying those containers on the street.
In Bayfield?
Yes.
So we don't want to be...
I can tell you that from, because I'm also a city attorney for the city of Bayfield, that there were some citations issued historically for those types of events, and none of them were problems that were being caused because people who were unaware that they couldn't carry a beverage from place to place. carry a beverage from place to place.
John. Uh, with our gallery down, down the way down here, it's the first time this year we're going to be open, uh, since the construction started on the main highway. This is kind of the opening, you know, excuse me. So we don't really care, uh, if they're wrong in, I mean, you know, it's, you know, and uh, it's one of these things where if we have beverages and containers, even if we're not with open containers, I'm constantly cleaning them up anyway on our other property over here by passes. And so we run behind trees and all kinds of stuff. So I think it's kind of, um, I don't think it's an issue that, you know, that it's going to be a big issue for anybody, and I think that people aren't going to try to be as responsible as possible, and if not, my dog and I will, you know, make the trip up and down and collect whatever we have to, um, you know, after it's all over, you know, so, you know, I'm definitely a favor, you know, going ahead and having open container.
It is good to have a clean up plan, thank you. No one cares to join us up?
Council also did approve open container for brownstone days, and the highway was not closed for that either, so.
And Ken has reviewed this and adjusted the hours and is he's okay with it?
Yes, he actually suggested the eight o'clock, it was set for a later time.
Oh, okay, so he did review it.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, comments, or discussions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, but we are being convinced. Uh, next item, discussion and action on extension to development agreement with Los deposit brewery LLC, tab four of your packet. Um, and that is basically just saying that Badger will be here tonight to give us an update, and here he is.
Hey, everybody, happy holiday season, you know, everyone's well, thanks again for your, your patience in what's been a less than ideal process. However, we are moving forward and we need to address our development agreement and the TIP agreement as well, dates in both of those. Uh, we'd like to extend those into 2025. Um, I don't know what the best way to do that is, so I kind of rely on X for that more than anything. It's through 2025, extend 12 months or whatever. Nothing has changed with us for our completion date, still August 1st is what's in my contract. I haven't received any change orders or anything.
That's your contract with your.
With the J.C., yeah, so we're so far so good. Um, what else have I got before I? Uh, we're, we are, we are currently in underwriting with our bank, still, but this is good, we're free to move ahead. Um, we are moving with concrete pour this week, I'm told, we should complete our foundation work and bring us up to grade, um, by next week. So we'll pour the concrete and then that fill and everything will be up to grade, and at that point we shouldn't, I don't know of any current water issues with the neighbors, that was a concern, and bringing up to grade should eliminate any of that. So that's kind of where the process is. Um, and then we'll move on from foundation to blockwork, which is a, is a wall, which against awesome color.
And that means just continuing on through the winter?
Yep, yep, continuing on, yep. Once the foundations work, we're free, so you can shovel off foundations, so I won't worry about it. So I just have to move it. Yeah.
Plus, not ideal to do it for work in the winter, I guess, but could be done.
Oh, yeah. We're not shy up here.
I guess not. So much for that inside winter work for the poor guys, but okay.
Yeah, yeah, there is that, there is that. Um, there is one other thing too, uh, I mean, I don't know if the city's entirely, I think I've discussed it before, but I don't know if everybody's entirely aware that the liquor laws have changed in our state. And so, um, the, the liquor license that, that we have in place for us, I will be able to get back. What happens is we still have to open as a brew pub in order to have a liquor license, and that's a, a merit of part of the business model. Uh, but once we produce 250 barrels of beer, um, we can change our license to a brewery license, and then we are entitled to, it's a state retail license that entails liquor as well, and we won't have any use of it from the city. Uh, but there's no, these laws are new and there's no provision for startups. I've asked, is there, can we just start up and have a grace period, and it's, there's nothing for that in place. If there were, I would happily relinquish it tomorrow, but I mean, I cannot.
Any idea, Badger, of how long it would take you to get to 250 barrels?
Yeah, I anticipate first full year of, mid-year, first full year of operations should be more than enough time. We should have crystal ball.
Right, right, but, but like not five years.
God, no, 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 no. First full year operations for sure, I'm hoping second quarter, third quarter for sure, it just depends how, kind of here we have.
Yeah, that's very exciting.
Yeah, so anyway, uh, whether, however we reword our agreement or whatever, I'm saying, you know, that's likely to be out of there.
As a contingency.
Yeah, we will be retaining it once we, once we get that barrel mount.
Thanks.
It works for me to actually, um, change the license, it's a better fit for me to do this. It lets us contract brew, um, for other breweries, it lets us, also, should we be able to expand beyond our capacity, we can use another brewery to contract our stuff as well, whereas a brew pub is not allowed to do that under the current law.
Very good, thank you for looking into that.
Sure.
Tracy, there's a question you mentioned early on, Tracy, can you just?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Um, you mentioned early on that you were having some issues that, or you're in the process of underwriting with the bank, is that creating problems with, like, your progress in the project and paying, you know, your contractors and whatnot?
No, not at all, no, we're great. Um, all's moving ahead, it's, it's checking boxes is what it is, so I'm not at a stage where, where somebody's going, no, you're not, we're not going to do this, it's check these boxes, make this happen, this is information for us. So, and once we're through that, we'll get the underwriting process, or I mean, I mean closing process.
And that's changing from a local bank to a bigger.
Yeah, we went, exactly, we, we're feeling somewhat stifled, a lot of jumping, we're going to L.R.H. National Bank.
Okay, thank you.
Do we need a motion?
Uh, we, we do need a motion, and I guess the things that we want to consider are the timeframe, uh, if we want to add the language about the liquor license there, uh, is there something else?
So I.
Oh, and then the tip, yeah.
I can just kind of do an update on this too, for, for what's being considered and what's in the notice is, both the TIP agreement and the development agreement have an open for business date as of the end of this year.
Right.
Um, the development agreement initially had an open for business date as like the end of last year, with a built-in one-year extension for good cause. Um, there isn't an automatic extension after this point. Council, that's why I've informed council to say what we want to do here. Uh, and it's really up to council to decide what you want to do, if you want to extend it, if you want to put commissions on it, anything like that. So the items to be considered are that open for business date, I was talking with Badger about it, council is open to another extension here, what we want to do is make it so this doesn't come back. So I ask Badger to give an absolute definite answer to when he's going to be open, so that this, because I know everyone's getting questions about this coming back and coming back and coming back.
And I get that.
So that this does not come back if this request is granted. Um, so options are choosing that, that, just an amendment, simple amendment that says that open for business date has our X for both the TIP and the development agreement. Uh, if we want to do, currently the development agreement has a provision that the city is holding that liquor license. Um, we can amend that, or if it would work with Badger to say they'll hold it until, uh, not indefinitely again, but even then require Badger to have the state permit in place by the end of 2026, um, something like that, that would allow, give an actual endpoint to when the city would get that, that quota license back, um, because he said it should be the year after you'll, you'll meet the 250 barrels a year. Uh, so then that would give to the end of the calendar year, maybe even more, whatever council wants there to get that, that liquor license available. Um, and another option is if, if we want to approve and end a contingent on, I don't know, Badger, do you have a, a date that's expected for this underwriting to be completed in the financing?
I wish I did, Max, if, I, there's nothing I can do on John's readers that would force the bank to.
So you don't have a closing date?
I do not, no, we have to go through the underwriting process before they will close, and again, they ask questions, you give them the information, we supply materials, that's where I'm at.
And, and one other option that had been discussed potentially is a council approving a extension date contingent on receiving a signed financing commitment by whatever other date, and that means if Badger doesn't get it, if you say it's in January or whatever it is, if we don't get it by that, then we come back again, but if you do get it, then we don't have to come back and discuss all of that. Um, it's really up to council to decide how we want to work with that.
So we don't have, uh, a real timeframe for the closing, or we think it's.
I'm, I'm going to end up getting a letter for you probably week in front of closing, based on, they're producing the issue in the letter, you get it via mail, so, and I, I can't give a date, it's like, okay, I just have to play ball with National Bank.
And, and then another option is, the council just says, okay, we'll give them another month, and we come back in a month and ask the same question, but that's not in, from what I've been hearing, what people want to do, so to get something set here, uh, more concrete is an option, but it's up to you guys to decide.
So you feel like you're gonna, um, you're on target with your developer for August?
Yeah, we're pretty good.
Okay, and we do have, um, uh, payments that we're waiting for on the grants, right?
Yeah, so the, the CBI grants, uh, we get reimbursed for, for expenditures.
So we, we, Tony, you put together receipts and turned that in, and now we're just waiting for the deposit.
The deposit has come in and kept the check list.
I was probably.
Yeah, I was actually.
We, we were wondering what that was. Okay, great.
Yeah, we picked up a kilo of those.
Excellent, so things are.
And the CBI grant actually runs through 2026, so they have till 2026 to run that up.
Okay, so what's the pleasure of council for our motion? Or we can postpone and talk about this in closed session, correct?
Yeah, okay. I'm almost bored to talk about a closed session.
So does someone need to make a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion to do that.
Second?
I think it would, it would just be table until the later agenda.
Okay, all right, very good. Um, we need a motion to table it, or I can just table it? Let's make a motion to table it.
Motion wouldn't hurt.
Make the motion.
Oh, sorry.
I'll second it.
I've got Darren with a motion to table and Tracy with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much.
And thank you all for, again, it's kind of less than ideal process, but we're really excited.
It's exciting seeing you move each over there, yeah.
Appreciate it, have a good night.
Thanks, you guys. All right. Our next item is discussion and action on employee bonuses. Uh, this is another item that we could make a motion to table until, to a closed session item, if anyone would care to do that.
I will make the motion to table.
I'll second it. Okay, motion by Darren, second by Tracy, to table until closed session item.
Is there a handout for that, or is that?
There is now, this was kind of a, uh, not a very.
Sure, I just thought I missed it, that's all, I missed one.
Oh, all right, uh, so all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is discussion and action on final 2025 budget adjustments and resolution number 24-018, adopting all 2025 budgets and expenditures. That's tab six of your packets. And I believe we have Scott Raskuson online, um, who has been courageous enough to work with us throughout the whole budget process and hear it along the way, and get us to this point. Scott, any, uh, final set off words here?
Um, not too many, but thank you for the kind words, Mayor. Um, basically what you have, uh, becoring here tonight is the final resolution that is essentially everything that we talked about at the public hearing back in the November 18th meeting. Um, and some cities do it all at once at the public hearing, um, the, uh, City of Washburn has obviously done it just a little differently, uh, so I just follow the same example that your former administrator followed, so, you know, the numbers, the basically that we talked about last time are exactly the same with this resolution, it just wraps everything up. Um, and to that end, uh, you know, again, it was, um, pretty, pretty, you know, standard going forward, and we talked at length about the, uh, the increases in the, in the levy that were essentially offset by the TIP coming off. Um, obviously we did have that little, um, hiccup with TIP 3, uh, but at the end of the day, things worked out pretty well, and, um, you know, before I, unless there's questions on the budget itself, I did, um, get a copy, Cam and I have been working on, uh, basically getting the tax bills, uh, the information for the county to get the tax bills out, and those did arrive this afternoon, so I was just going to maybe go through, through a quote unquote typical tax bill just a little bit, but again, I'll let you ask any questions if you have any.
That'd be great, does anyone have any questions for Scott? Should we move into the tax bill? Uh, yeah, if you could, uh, walk us through the tax bill illustration, Scott, that'd be great.
Well, and again, it's not, I mean, you're being at, it's not in front of you, you won't soon be seeing this, uh, uh, soon enough, but what I did want to do is just kind of talk through it a little bit from the standpoint of knowing that you, you may get some, some questions from your constituents. Uh, so at the end of the day, you were, you were aware that effectively the city levy went down, and so I'm looking at a tax bill for a, a, a family of about $148,000 worth of residential property, uh, just for comparison sake. Um, it does slight increase, a 0.2% increase for the county, um, a five and a half percent decrease for the city, 1.4% increase for the technical college, which is not a big deal anyway. Um, but the finance committee, we, the finance committee and I did talk about this in our last meeting, um, and again, the folks were aware that the school, uh, levy was going up with the passage of the referendum. Uh, on this tax bill, though, it's 49.8%. So again, you get questions from your constituents, and the majority of that is, so 84% of that is from the referendum, and that, and that's very clear on what that additional referendum charge will be on everybody's tax bill, um, specifically for each property. Uh, and then there was also though a 16% increase, we'll call it general, their general operating levy, so it's a, it's a big amount. At the end of the day, uh, in this case, the, the tax bill after the family dollar or the first dollar credits and the gaming credits, um, was a 10.2% increase. Again, the net of that being almost exclusively due to the school this year.
You kind of jumped over the 16% general operating lot, but it's.
Was that the school?
Yeah.
Oh, the school, it's still school.
Yeah, yeah.
So some of it was referendum, some of it was general.
Okay, okay, thanks, I was like, is that us? Okay.
And then, um, sorry, I missed that amount, so on a, on the $148,000 value, how much was the tab?
2% increase. What was it, 2.2? 10.2. 10.2% increase.
Yeah, 10.2 total, yeah.
So that's, so we did not add to that, basically. We actually kept it down. Okay, thank you for that.
Thanks, Scott.
And even, and even with the, I think, yeah, it is like, it is like, you know, we talked about this at the, at public hearing and the finance committee, I talked about it, you know, quite often, uh, the fact that TIP. the fact that TIP 2 came off the books this year helped everyone tremendously. Even with that little snafu with TIP 3, if that had gotten on properly for this year, the city's increase still would have probably been about a minus 3%. So we've been with that, so, again, it was a, a good year for TIP to come off, otherwise that school levy would have been probably closer to 60 or 70% increase. So again, it's, it's a big number, I already gave Kami a heads up, I said keep a tab for me on how many questions you get with the whole. That's, again, those, those things jump out at folks.
Hopefully we'll see how that dollar bill with the divisions that shows how much is.
Yeah.
Right.
Should have an explanation.
Yeah. All right, very good, any questions for Scott on that? Okay, then I would entertain a motion on the resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 24-018 adopting all 2025 budgets.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Tom and second by Darren. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you very, very much, Mr. Raffelson.
Thank you all for the pleasure of working with you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Scott. Have a great Christmas.
Take care and have a good holiday.
All right. Our next item is discussion in action on non-assertive outstanding bills, this is tab seven of your packet.
I'll make a motion to approve the printing out $6,280 for 10% outstanding.
Second. Motion by Dave, second by Jen. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion in action on 2025 meeting, election and holiday calendar, this is tab eight of your packet, and before anyone makes some, well, I guess, I would propose a couple, I just wanna let you know that I have a couple of conflicts with this calendar, we didn't discuss it ahead of time at all, I know there are no conflicts with elections and that sort of thing, we do have a typo there on Veterans Day that's Tuesday, November 11th. So the Monday, August 11th meeting and the Monday, May 12th meeting, I know now that I got conflicts with those meetings. I don't know if we wanna make any adjustments, otherwise our council president can certainly run those meetings. Usually I can do that May meeting while I'm at a conference that I normally go to, I will not be at that conference this year, I will be in DC representing us at the leading Wisconsin U N S Allies, and I don't believe I'll have an opportunity to run the council meeting while I'm there. And then the August meeting is when I have the conflict with the state of town to fair for my other job. It's, it's the Mondays right after the fair when we're literally moving everything back to Washburn and I just won't be able to prepare for that during the week of the fair, so.
If we adjusted them a week, up or back, do that matter?
Up or back, either way I think is fine, if you'd like to make an adjustment, otherwise, you know, that, that does affect, you know, then you only have three weeks to the next meeting, so it's up to you whether you wanna just proceed and have Jen on the meeting, I'm sure we could have conversation ahead of time and make sure.
I'm here, I'm available both of those times.
Okay, so then we could just do it, okay. So then I would look for a motion on this calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the calendar for 2025.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Tracy, second by Tom. Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Then I would look for a motion to go into closed session, is this a roll of my vote to go into closed sessions?
I'm making a motion for it.
Motion by Tom?
Second.
Second by Darren. Roll call vote please.
Derek Miller?
Yes.
Tracy Snyder?
Yes.
Jen Mazias?
Yes.
Tom Davis?
Yes.
Dave Anderson?
Yeah.
Ron Hopkins?
Yes.
Jared Trumbull?
Yes.
We are in closed session at 6:25.
And I'll clarify, I'm assuming that included city attorney.
Yes, the purpose was for discussion and, it's a good guess.
Okay, that was recorded, stopped. Making the poll proof even too. You have to poke the end.